Good morning. Nice to be back in beautiful sunny Indiana. We're here this morning to conduct county business for the Lepore County Board of Commissioners. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. John Jones, would you start us off, please?
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, with which it stands, one nation, united and fair, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
All three members present.
Thank you. Consider agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Do we have any corrections?
11F. Or we're just going to hold it?
I thought we would.
Okay, I got it.
Chat about that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Consider approval of April 21st, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider of claims.
Commissioners, we have payroll ending for the period 4/23/21 in the amount of $1,137,197.00. We do have an amended operating expense claim number. It is not the 1.941 million listed. The actual number is $1,585,369.15. The difference is $356,600 that is accounted for in the billing to Marquez Electric that is listed twice in your Commissioner Claims listing. Just by way of transparency, the claim was submitted by two very conscientious department heads who wanted to make sure that the claim was paid. We caught that. Obviously, the checks don't go out until after you approve the claims, and so we need to deduct one of those purchase orders, which has been pulled and is in the hands of my deputy right now.
But you have a motion to approve as agenda.
So the amount? No, I'm sorry. Did I say the amount?
Yeah, yeah. If you could repeat that just after your explanation.
The revised amount is $1,585,369.15.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as amended.
I would second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also point out that we have some outstanding claims from January, February, and March that were included in this one that wouldn't normally have been in there.
So they were approved as amended. Okay, next on the agenda, public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment on any county business that we're talking about? Wow. Public comment going twice?
I'm not a person.
Okay, go ahead.
So Randy O'Mack, County Council President, also the chairman of the four counties chair of celebrations. So there's two items I sent to commissioners at this point. Biden's on your agenda today, but I just want to speak on before they come out. The first one is consideration for appointments, items in the American Rescue Plan, if they are working for. I'm asking that since the council has the ultimate authority when it comes to approving spending, we'd like to have three council members on this committee consideration for that because, like I said, we have the ultimate authority to spend it, so we would be the max that we could have on there. We'd like to see that amended so it'll be up to the council members. The other item is 11 new business. Consider ordinance of many zoning maps, rezoned property, own prior subdivision. I am absolutely not opposed to this. It's out on Highway 39. Hang on a minute. I'm not opposed to this at all. I think it's a fantastic thing, just like I thought.
Who let the dogs out?
No, that's funny, Randy. The joys of Zoom calls.
Have we got your email on both of those, Randy?
So just let me finish, but there's an issue where we, it's a dead-end water main going out there, and it was always designed to have a water tower out there. New development is working very hard, like grants and funding. Get the water tower out there, and we need to support the fire departments, the water departments. Everybody agrees that if this.
No, we can't hear him at all.
To make sure that we get this water, at least having the process of being installed out there, we won't be adding a lot more to it because we're just thinking of a problem figuring out. We don't want anything to happen, anybody getting really tired around here. So I welcome everything. I'm not opposed to this. I just think, as we just need to prioritize that water out there. Would that?
Yeah, thanks, Randy. I'm aware of that all along. I've been involved in those discussions, and I'm really kind of surprised that the Plan Commission passed that without some sort of reference, at least, to water tower. So we'll discuss that, but thank you for your input on that. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none? Hey, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mike Pollan, Building Commissioner. I just want to piggyback on Randy's comments. So at the Plan Commission, I did specifically address the water issues as well as some drainage, and what occurred there was just approval of rezoning. So there's no final construction plans or engineering plans or anything of that sort that's been submitted to the county regarding that as of yet. And if and when we receive those plans, we'll scrutinize them. It'll go through another hearing, and it'll have to be approved. I do share the concerns about the water out there. My understanding is the assisted living development is now off the table, and now we have this other development, the townhouses, that is on the table. This is a prime area for development. I know we have a 12-inch main that goes out on North 39. At one point, they're reduced to eight. I don't believe that affects the townhouse development, but if there is a water tower or anything like that in the works, I would like to be kept in the loop on that because we have a lot going on, a lot of permit applications, a lot of interested development in that area. So, you know, I don't know what our position is as a county on this, but.
We've been talking about the water tower for some time, and we've talked with a lot of different people, including Mayor Dermody, and there've been some interesting discussions on that. But it's something that if we're going to develop that area, it's something we've got to do because, as Randy has said, you don't have enough water for fire suppression. That's a big deal. So I'm saying that water tower is about 3.5 million bucks. You figure that out, we're going to be all right. But it'd be nice to come off the toll road and see the big water tower, Lepore, Indiana, Rich Marzinski Commissioner, something.
And we have some wonderful ideas for development out there, and, you know, people want to move forward. I know that the Hampton End is out there, and they're doing okay. We looked at fire suppression plans for the assisted living. That one's off the table now, but I think that if there was one fire, my understanding is we would be able to manage it. If there were two fires at the same time and those hydrants were all opened up, then we could have a problem. That's my understanding of what the situation is.
Or a big fire.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So this is only the zoning, then?
This.
This was only rezoned?
This was only rezoned. It was preliminary stages. We haven't received any engineering or final plans or any sign-offs from the local fire jurisdiction. All of that would be required to pass final.
Yeah.
I think Randy wants to.
I think that'll.
I understand. I am absolutely not opposed to the rezoning of this place. This is a minus, just a reference. I said this, my guy, Paul Prer, in Indiana. This is something that we just need to make sure. Where, so this is, I'm not trying to stand in the way of the zoning. I support the zoning. If it's needed, I'm all for this development coming. We need to work harder to get this other problem fixed. And just for reference, there was a fire on John's Road, I believe, that was part of the day. Four people was murdered, Randy. So that tells you how bad the water problem is. And I'm not saying, you know, getting by, you know, we just don't have a problem. So I just want to go on right there. I am absolutely not opposed to this. Zoning change, the commission should have passed this zoning change. I support it, but we just need to.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
I would concur with Randy. That's why I'm here to back up this statement.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment?
Um, I think I.
Yes.
Okay. I'll let.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kind of.
Cunningham, 6311 West Shima Drive, Lepore, Indiana. I concur with both Randy and Mike, and my other comment would be that on your committee for the ARPAP fund, I would suggest strongly that we add the auditor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Would you like me to speak from here approach the podium? Commissioners, I wanted to appeal to you to consider including me on the ARP committee. I think that it would be a, first of all, I have a significant background, not just in business and finance, but also in the not-for-profit sector. I've served as the treasurer of four different not-for-profits, and so I think as the handmaiden, if you will, to the county council, secretary of the role to be fulfilled to the council who will have to approve all the funding, I think that it's important to have the auditor on that board as well. And I think as far as some of the conflicts, frankly, that we've had in government, that to have the auditor, this is a person or position that traditionally, I think, would be on such a board. The former auditor was on the COVID committee, that it would go far away to showing that, I will just say this and wrapping it up here, that I have concerns that if I'm not included on this committee, that the impression is that it's something political, and I think that that would make me more sad than angry. I would just be very sad about that. So thank you for your consideration.
I would support the auditor being added to that also.
Any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody in the room? The room and the Zoom? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is over. Department heads, comments and reports?
Good morning, Commissioner. Just wanted to give you a fast update. What I've kind of been finding in the last couple days or so is moving pretty fast. I'm sure Mr. Friedman has a lot of information on it, too, is the House Bill 389 that passed with what they're going to be doing with wetlands. There are four classes, but I'm just going to tell you, basically, we mostly use three, one being the worst, three being a better wetland. And it's kind of up for grabs, really, as far as what everybody's going to be doing and how MS4s are going to do it. I have requested additional training from Mr. Moffitt at IDM, and I have also talked to John Ritchie from the Corps of Engineers to try and do as much as information as I can because this is going to move pretty fast. Contractors have already called me, and I really don't have a lot of the answers yet, so I'm going to wait until I get the legal advice and find out exactly how our county wants to look at some of these things. A one, basically, just to let you know, is not the best wetland, and a three would be better, and a four is even the best. And it all depends on the amount of human development that's done, things to the wetlands and the critters that are in them. That's how they class them. But MS4 coordinators cannot classify them. One thing, though, that I was really interested in letting Mr. Friedman know, I did not know this till yesterday, that there are certain counties that are passing their own ordinances of how they're going to do it in the county versus the state. So I'm only mentioning that so Mr. Friedman's aware of it. He may not be. Lake County is doing a big ordinance change already. I know Mr. Matt Lake over there. I've requested a copy of what they're going to be doing. I've got a feeling this is going to be a little helter-skelter for a while. I just wanted to make everybody know, and I'll be dealing with Mr. Adamsky, my attorney, and I'm sure him and Shaw will be talking stuff out, but it's a little early in the game, but basically, it's going to be kind of a nightmare for a while until we all figure out what we're going to do. Because I can't classify them. I have actually requested that they have a big training session. They usually have one every year for contractors. I have requested that they have one for MS4 coordinators and give us training so we have an idea of what is being done with the classifications, what you look for, what you look at, even if we can't specifically do it. Mr. Moffitt is great from IDM, but there's only one of them. And so I'm just throwing it out there. This might be a little bit of a helter-skelter thing for a while, and I just wanted you guys to know.
My suggestion would be I would take it up with Plan Commission. I would go to them first in terms of any kind of proposed ordinance, vet it through Plan Commission, and then they could come to this board with any kind of recommendation on wetlands. But it's a good suggestion, at least, to examine it and look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Brown? Quick question, just for clarification, so folks understand where you're coming from with this. It's my understanding roughly about 2/3 of the wetlands in Indiana had at least state protection, and only about 1/3 of them had federal protection. Is that correct?
Well, I've read that stuff, too. I have not seen how truthful that is for sure. But one thing is for sure to me, contractors are going to try to build where they can. I'm not going to say take advantage of it, but they're going to use it to their favor. You know, one thing that you cannot do with a wetland is you cannot use it as a stormwater quality measure. So if we have something over here, we're building over here, we cannot run waters directly to a level. However, I've been questioning already to IDM. Well, if you can fill it, then why can't you use it as a stormwater quality measure? Because if you fill it, then you know what's going to happen while these wetlands get filled, it's going to create flooding. So I'm saying, well, wait a minute. That doesn't seem right. Why can't we use it as a stormwater quality measure, especially if there's no significant nexus, no water going in or out? So I'm just kind of bringing you guys up to speed on it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other department heads?
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Levin, Director of Facilities. As you know, we're trying to move forward with the EMS project and highway project in Rowan Prairie. So in an effort to help our engineering department out and Jay, so he's not overwhelmed, we talked about getting out and looking for an outside firm to give assistance to him. So yesterday, and we emailed some stuff over to Attorney Friedman, we've got three proposals that have come in. I wanted to give that to you so that you could review them and make a decision on which way we'd like to go so we can keep moving forward with this project.
Thank you. Good idea.
Yep.
Give it Diane.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Tony Rodriguez, Director of Community and Economic Development. As you know, this topic of broadband and critical infrastructure that supports really the future of Lepore County, from everything ranging from the business community to the healthcare, quality of healthcare, the commerce that's affected and primarily and elevated during the pandemic status, education, K through 12 and higher education, continues to garner not only national attention but close state attention as well. So I just wanted to just elevate the need for us to push this participation level in the surveying that we're actively doing with the Lepore County Broadband Task Force. And I know all of our entire elected leadership in Lepore County has been very supportive of getting the best participation in this survey, but we're so close at this point, we really just need to get over that final hump and give a last push here. So I wanted to elevate, try to encourage anyone listening, the media that's possibly watching here today, to encourage all residents, business, and the institutions that are paying close attention to broadband development to get on the county's website and take the survey that will demonstrate their quality of connection. So it's very simple. It's lreportco.in.gov, and if they click that link, it will take them immediately to the survey and get us over the hump. We're very close. I believe the last count was 870 surveys taken, and our goal is 1,000. So my hat's off to Mike O. and the GIS department and all of those working right now to get that much-needed data reported. So thank you.
The complaint I heard was people that do not have Wi-Fi, how are they supposed to respond on your website when they can't get it because they don't have a Wi-Fi?
That is.
That's a problem.
It sure is.
We do have paper copies, though.
Yeah.
That is correct. And the Lepore County Library.
The word is getting out, that's for sure.
It is. And in the event that we have someone listening or watching, and our communication with the media is to go into a Lepore County library branch and take that paper survey, and then they're able to record their home address and that they have zero connectivity. So lots of energy and effort going into this at this point, and we're getting very close.
If I could add, Tony, it's important for our data mapping that we not only have the people who have really, really bad connections, but we're also trying to map the ebb and flow of connectivity across the county. So even if you have, for your business or for your home, you have relatively good internet or you even have great internet, we need that data, too. What we have found is that our beloved cable companies have their own maps, and their own maps do not often reflect the complete state of affairs in our county. And so what we're trying to do is even if you have great internet, we need to know where those pockets of good internet are, where it's medium, and where it's really poor, and where it's non-existent. So we're trying to get the full range of a profile for Lepore County. So that data is really, really rich. It takes you two minutes to fill out that survey. If you need a paper copy and you can't get to the library, if you call Diane at our office, I'm sure we can get you a copy.
Excellent. Yes, that's very good. Thank you.
Any other department heads? Being shy here.
Amanda.
Oh, yeah, please.
She's got her hand up.
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning, Amanda.
Just a quick update, of course, on COVID. Our numbers have continued to rise. We're still seeing 30, 40, 50 new cases reported a day. Unfortunately, since the last time I reported, we've had six additional deaths from COVID, which is, death is always sad, but now we have a vaccine that can prevent death. And vaccines are still readily available. You can walk in and get vaccinated these days at any clinic, and you can go to rshotlpc.com. This is a reminder to find all the vaccination areas near you. If you prefer to make an appointment, you can make an appointment. But please feel free to walk in and get that vaccination. We will be in the orange still this week. If that hasn't been updated yet, it will be shortly, and the positivity rate is still up there in the 10% range. But I could take a minute and talk a little bit related but unrelated. Tomorrow starts National Nurse Week, and it starts in the middle of the week. It always starts on May 6th because that is the birthdate of Florence, Lymandale. But during the last year, this past year, we've all faced challenges affecting our personal lives that we have never encountered before. We've had shortages at the grocery stores, our favorite restaurants have closed. We've had limited access to services or lost access to services that we took for granted, remote and hybrid schooling, and constraints on our family gatherings. And then domestic and international travel. I'm still pretty salty about it that I was supposed to go to Italy last year, a trip that my sister and I have planned and saved for for a long time. I understand Italy's not going anywhere, but I'm still obviously salty a year later. And then 2020, the pandemic wasn't enough. Mother Nature kept adding to that. Every month, we had a new challenge, from wildfires, droughts, snowstorms, ice storms. But I think the biggest, people who really rose to the challenges have been our nurses and our healthcare workers. And that's exactly what nurses have done this past year. They have encountered limitations on supplies. Personal protective equipment became a very scarce commodity. The level of care increased to address preventative measures with patients testing positive of COVID-19. There were higher levels of treatment and interventions from multiple professionals in the healthcare field. There were restrictions on visitors. There was no visitors for patients or residents required, or they require virtual electronic visits, adding to a nurse's responsibility. They now had to become IT professionals. The worst part during the end of live care, nurses became that patient's care provider and their family's support, and family's support were their loved ones. And then on top of all of that, these healthcare professionals isolated themselves from their families to prevent exposing loved ones and taking this virus home to their families. But as the challenging, as the challenge to the nurses rose, nurses demonstrated their flexibility to adapt and overcome these hurdles. Screening and testing for the virus have become a new standard. Appointments for healthcare have transitioned from office appointments to telehealth engagements. Triage nurses have become skilled at screening care and age with promoting technologies. Family visits have become scheduled with times with iPad, cell phones, computers, desktops, laptops. And cleaning and disinfecting have been taken to a whole new level. And additional precautions have been implemented to halt the spread of the virus. And all of this, a lot of this, have all fallen on the shoulders of nurses. But I would hope that everybody, everybody has a nurse in their life. My own mother is a nurse retired after 46 years. I learned my work ethic from both of my parents, but to see what my mom did every single day, I learned a lot from her. I learned a lot of empathy from her. So I would ask, I would hope that everybody would take a minute and thank the nurse. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Amanda. Yeah, it's been a challenging year for all of us, and especially right now, it's really put us in an uncomfortable position. When we look around at the communities around us that are moving in a positive direction, and we're going in the wrong direction, I don't understand, we've been wearing masks for a year, why it isn't working? I don't, I get complaints from people all the time that you need to change the mandate, you need to relax it, we need to get out. We have businesses closing. We have businesses that are hurting, but we also have people dying. And it puts us in an uncomfortable position as commissioners that we have to continue with the mandate at the advice of Dr. Ducey and also the governor now. When people look around and go, well, hell, I can go to Chicago, and they're relaxing their standards in other communities around other counties. So I guess we just continue to bite the bullet and do what we can and rely on the advice of our health professionals. So, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just thank Amanda. Amanda, that was really, really well-presented. Amanda, that was really, really well presented, and I just wanted to thank you as the mother of a nurse and the sister of nurses like you. I think you made a really good point. Whether you have nurses in your family or whether you've been cared for a kind to nurse, they imprint themselves in your memory because usually you need a nurse when you are the most vulnerable. So thank you for sharing that, and I agree with you, everyone needs to thank a nurse.
Thank you, Director Laners. Appreciate it. And having spent most of my life in healthcare, nurses are by far the backbone of our healthcare professionals. So, thank you.
Any other department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? I guess you'd say I was a department head, being the president of the commission. I'd like to say hello to Amanda Haverstick. It was brought up to my attention last week when they showed me the newspaper and said, "Did you quit? Are you still a commissioner? You got a picture of Shaw, you got a picture of two commissioners, and the commissioner said this and said that." And I said, "Maybe Amanda doesn't know I'm a commissioner." So, hi. Okay, moving right along, if we have no more department heads. Request. Consider permission to approach council to repay surcharge account. Barb Houston, E911. Welcome. Old friend.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It came to my attention through an email from the State 911 Board that some equipment, it was a copier and printers were purchased with, through our surcharge account. And there are certain guidelines with the surcharge account you can't purchase. Some are ineligible. And the copier printer is ineligible to be purchased out of that account. I didn't have any, I didn't have any invoices as to what was purchased, so I called Kempson. They did supply me with invoices. Evidently, through the 911 state, they said they sent an email to the auditor, Joey Winsky, on April 7th, but I was not told until the end of April. This email that I got says that if this is not repaid, that they will hold our surcharge allotment for the month. So I need to go before the council by the end of the month. The only account that I have that I have any money and that I can take this out of is the utilities account, and I'm not even sure if it qualifies. Are the utilities account?
I'm going to suggest that you're right. Approach the council. I mean, you've been very meticulous about trying to make sure that any expenditures are consistent with the E911 state board, and so you may want to simply go ahead and get the reimbursement appropriated by the council so that it can be reimbursed. But I know you've been looking very carefully at what things are reimbursable and what are not, and this appears to be one that was not.
I did call the State Board of Accounts, and they sent me the right information. You know what, I can and can't be updated for 2020. But, and it's not in there. It's not eligible. But, you know, I'm.
Would be my suggestion that you authorize the repayment and authorize then the director to go before the council to get the appropriation so that it can be placed back into our account then. So move.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, on agenda, consider payment of 60 unused sick days for Sylvia Papinow, who is retiring from Superior Court Number One. We have verified that she is in fact eligible for these sick days. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve Sylvia Papinow after 32 years of service to this county, that she be awarded her unused sick days.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Sylvia.
Yes, indeed. 32 years of putting up with the county, that's a, that's a good deal. Consider permission to approach council to spend from the commissary fund for Guard One equipment. Rochelle Brown, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here, would question your permission to purchase this equipment called the Guard One. This equipment, of course, will be used for safety and security of participants here at the facility, and also accountability to our staff. What it is, is a device that will be placed into each room. We will have a handheld device that they will need to go on each door and check on a regular basis. I will be able to track that in our computer system as to make sure that those checks are being done properly along with my management staff. We've already went through the advisory board. They have approved this. I've already went before council as well. I was on the agenda for another matter, and I was able to include this instead of waiting to the end of the month. That was the only reason why I'd already opposed house now already. So I needed to come back and also speak to you all concerning that. So looking for your permission to go ahead and implement this. This will be purchased out of commissaries, so council is not appropriating any funds for us to purchase.
You've been through, you've already been through with the council, you said?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
So I would amend the motion and approve the expenditure of $15,747.01 that has already been approved by the advisory board and the county council, and permit Director Brown to go ahead and make this purchase.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, into old business. Consider recommendation for bids for police vehicles. John Boyd, Sheriff. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here today to provide a recommendation for bids that we elicited about a month ago. We've received, and we've had an opportunity to review, but we'd also like permission at this point to trade 16 existing vehicles from our fleet and several that belong to the commissioners as well, because that is part of the overall cost that we'll be approaching the council for at the end of this month. So that being said, after reviewing the bids that we received, we recommend a bid for nine 2021 Ford Police Interceptors, utility four-wheel-drive vehicles from Lock Monday Commercial Ford in Knox, and three Dodge Ram 1500 Special Service Vehicles from Lepore Chrysler here in Lepore. The Ford Explorers are a cost of $35,543 per vehicle. The final price or the total cost in that is $319,887. The three Dodge Ram 1500 Special Service Vehicles are all priced separately because of different packages that we're getting. One of them priced, the bid price is $26,590. The second one is $27,690. And the third is $28,190. The total cost of that is $82,470.
Thank you, Sheriff. I've been in communication with Major Heffrich and also Bob Parks on what's going on there. Yeah, it's his time. We've worn him out. I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation of Sheriff Boyd on the purchase of vehicles for his department.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, and the trade of those 16 vehicles as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next, we have consider appointments to American Rescue Plan Working Group. I understand we have scheduled a workshop with county council for next week.
I believe, yes. You and Mr. Novak conferred and are looking at a joint workshop to discuss potential financial advisors, since I now have in my office the three proposals, which I'm going to forward to all of you. And I believe you were talking about a joint workshop for 6 o'clock a week from tonight to jointly discuss with the council potential retention of a financial advisor.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, at this time, I think it would be wise of us to put this on hold. First of all, there seems to be some misunderstanding about what our intent was with this work group. This was to be a citizens' work group. And, you know, $21 million, while it's a lot of money, it's really important that it's a one-time windfall that we carefully spend and investing in the future of Lepore County. And our goal was to, we, you know, all the elected officials have ideas. We know what some of the issues are in our county. We know where there's needs, but we only can see what we can see. There's a lot of the community members who have access to other populations, other community needs that we may not be aware of. And so the idea was that we would be inclusive and transparent and build a community work group that would be able to advise the county council, the county commission, and other elected officials who will be making the final decisions. It is not, you know, the idea behind it, and maybe I wasn't as clear as I should have been, was really to be able to look at our county in broad brushstrokes and see what this community thinks. There may be 1,000 ideas out there. We cannot fund probably 1,000 ideas. And so how do we distill those community needs down to maybe 10, or 20, or 30 ideas that may grow legs as projects? And then give that information and that input to the county commission and the county council, who will together be making decisions with the auditor, with the treasurer, with other elected officials who have been vested by our community in being a decision-maker on these issues. And so I just wanted to put that out there, that I think it's good to hold it right now until we hear from our, whoever the financial advisor may be, or hear from our colleagues next week at the workshop, and then consider ways to move forward. So at this time, I'd like to table this.
Motion to table. I understand that. Have a second?
Second. Wait until next week makes sense.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving into new business. Consider proclamation for Correctional Officers and Employees Week. John Boyd, Sheriff.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
On May 5th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan designated the second week of May as National Correctional Officers Week. National Correctional Officers Week recognizes those individuals who take on the difficult task of working in the field of corrections. Perhaps no law enforcement entity is more underappreciated than the correctional officer. The value correctional staff play in public service is largely unknown to the public that they serve. The public often show their support of law enforcement, but the correctional officer is often forgotten about, or they're simply left out of the discussion. Those who work in corrections often find themselves in a thankless job. Our deputies assigned to our jail walk into a facility where others simply drive by and wonder what life is like inside. They witness firsthand things that people only see on TV, and those who witness them would rather forget. Our jail deputies, our support staff, and our treatment staff put themselves in harm's way to advance a mission of protecting the public, staff and inmates, while at the same time helping offenders to change their behavior to become better human beings. The task of returning individuals back to their communities better than what, when they left, becomes more of a challenge as departments are tasked with doing more with less. Under normal circumstances, it's difficult, stressful, and many times a dangerous profession. And because correctional personnel work behind secured walls outside of the public view, they're many times not as recognized as part of our first, our nation's first responders, but they truly are. And now, like other first responders, they have the monumental task of trying to deal with a silent and invisible deadly virus under conditions where social distancing becomes at least difficult for the most part, if not impossible. The guidelines and procedures they are now entrusted to execute to help control the spread of COVID-19 is an ever-changing and an unprecedented challenge to a degree that they have never dealt with before. And we owe them a debt of gratitude for doing so, considering the health risks that they are exposed to every day. Last year, nearly 100 correctional officers across the country lost their lives due to complications related to the COVID-19 virus. On February 21st, the Indiana Department of Correction lost a hero, Lieutenant Eugene Lasco, who was fatally stabbed by an inmate at the Indiana State Prison in Michigan City when he rushed to the aid of a fellow correctional officer who was being attacked. In our Lepore County Jail, we had five of our correctional employees last year who were assaulted by inmates. Three have been assaulted so far this year. The risks that they face, both visible and invisible, are unimaginable. The sacrifices that they and their families make go largely unnoticed and relatively unappreciated. As we celebrate National Correctional Officers Week, please remember that our jail deputies enforce the laws within our facility. Each day, our jail deputies armed with little more than pepper spray or perhaps a taser are locked in with violent criminals, some of which the public is very fearful of. Every day, our jail deputies offer aid and assistance and direction to those who are unable to help themselves. Each day, they place themselves in danger to protect individuals that society has discarded. They do this while treating those that they protect with dignity and respect, and oftentimes they don't receive that same treatment as reciprocated. They do this while being outnumbered nearly 40 to 1. Often, our jail deputies are called upon to work extra shifts or double shifts, and as a result, they miss out on family events and have to explain to their children and their family why they'll miss another game, a recital, or a parent-teacher conference because they have to work. It's crucial during the National Correctional Officers Week that we remember the importance of their mission and the dangers associated with their job. The nature of their job protects our community by limiting the movement of those who may want to harm them. In what seems to be an even more difficult task, our jail deputies send incarcerated people back into our community better than what they were when they arrived at our jail. I would reason that no one in the law enforcement community does more to ensure that our communities live without fear. During these uncertain times, our correctional employees come to work eager and enthusiastic about their job and their profession. They come to work not, they come to work not knowing the danger that they may face and the risks that they will be exposed to. In addition, they don't know if in turn they will expose their family to the same hazards when they return home from work. Each one of our correctional employees has a family or a significant other who are facing these same unknowns and making similar sacrifices to support their loved ones' cause. They are heroic, too, and we would be remiss if we didn't thank them and recognize them. The public looks to our correctional officers for safety and protection, and this is a monumental task. It's a task that they're proud of, and they readily accept, and one that is vitally important to our county. What they do is important. It does matter, and it takes a special person to do what they do. I can't tell you how proud I am of our staff, the sacrifices, as I said, are unimaginable that they faced. The fact that they got us through nine months COVID-free last year, and then when it exploded on January 4th, they did a wonderful job of mitigating it. I'm proud to report, as of today and for the last several months, we've been COVID-free in our jail, and it's because of the hard work and the dedication, the attention to detail of our jail staff, who largely, as I had said before, go unnoticed. I'd like to introduce some really important people that are here with me today. These are the people that actually get work done and lead our jail. Captain Allott, who is our jail commander. Jeanne Crosland, who's our administrative director, and Sergeant John Wilcher, who's our assistant jail commander. I'm very proud of these men and women, and the men and women in the Lepore County Jail. Captain, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Just real brief. Sheriff pretty well laid out exactly what the men and women of our jail division do every day. I see it every day. We see it every day. And I will tell you, I appreciate the fact that we take time each year to recognize what they do. It may seem like a little thing to take a brief moment here today to recognize them, but it goes, goes very well recognized by them. Commissioner Haney, you were there yesterday. Appreciate the visit. There is a, there is a response to that, and I will tell you, it's appreciated. So little things that we can do to support them each, each year is paying dividends as we progress forward. So, thank you.
I've always said, police officers don't get paid enough for the risk they take, and you guys are a great example of what keeps things going here. It's a dangerous job, and there's very few people that would even want to try, let alone do it. I think.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You do have a proclamation that was sent to you by Jeanne Crosland?
So, Mr. President and Sheriff Boyd, I'd like to read that proclamation. Before I do so, your staff and you, under your leadership, Sheriff Boyd, and yours as well, Commander, make our county safe. There are families and children, women, our elders, who really appreciate being made to feel a sense of safety in Lepore County, and it's basically due to the good work that you do. So please express our appreciation to your staff, to not only the sheriff deputies, but also the support staff. Proclamation from Lepore County Board of Commissioners to all who may be present. Whereas correctional facilities across the U.S. are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession, and whereas correctional officers and employees are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice and our nation, and whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors, and whereas the career of correctional officers and employees is often very challenging and stressful, the dedicated individuals who work in the Lepore County Jail every day perform their duties well and with great pride, and whereas the Lepore County Jail correctional officers and employees are brave, courageous, and tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep our public safe and serve this honorable profession nobly and. our public safe and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of LaPorte County, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through 8th, 2021, as Correctional Officers and Employee Week in the County of LaPorte, and we invite all of our citizens to duly note this occasion. Thank you so much. Mr. President, I move that we accept this proclamation and have it read into the record.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you. Sheriff, before you walk away, I'd just like to say thank you very much to you and Captain Ott and Sergeant.
Wilcher.
Wilcher, thank you. Sorry. I met a lot of folks yesterday, and the staff there, the conditions are exceptional, and you guys do a really good job of running that facility. And just want to say a special thank you to that, and keep up the amazing work.
Thank you.
Well, while you're there, our next item is Consider Clear Contract for Sheriff's Department.
Yes. This is an investigative tool that is used by our investigators. We're switching companies, something where we can glean public information through this web-based system that will help with those investigations. The contract has been sent to the county attorney, and he's had an opportunity to review it, sent it back. He didn't have any objections, and he voiced with us.
Correct.
And this will be paid for, like our present system is, it will be leaving through discretionary funds, so we will not need an appropriation from the council.
Entertaining motion to accept that.
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Consider Proclamation of Emergency Medical Services Week. Andrew McGuire, EMS. As the song goes, every girl's crazy about a sharp dressed man.
I was just trying to look as good as you three. How was that?
Glad I didn't get you out.
And I probably failed. Came up short, so. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So it goes without saying that the past year and a half has been extremely difficult for everyone, and extremely challenging for those in emergency services and healthcare. The men and women of LaPorte County EMS are used to being on the front lines, but, as you all know, dealing with a pandemic was a whole new ballgame. Facing this virus face-to-face, all suited up in PPE, knowing that we may be infected ourselves, or that we may unknowingly take this virus home to our family, added a layer of complexity and stress to the job that our employees never imagined. Combined with the seamlessly endless shifts of overtime and mandatory overtime that we had to issue just to keep our department running, proved to be almost unbearable. If it wasn't for the dedication and compassion of our employees, we would not have overcome these challenges. They are truly the glue that holds our department together. And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank each and every one of our 65 employees. They've all gone above and beyond this year, and nothing I can say or do will match the amount of gratitude that these EMS employees deserve. And with that being said, I should introduce Eric Fenstermaker, Assistant Director. I should have done that from the beginning. But with that being said, I would ask for your consideration of the EMS Week proclamation.
Mr. President, I would like to read the proclamation. Before I do so, I'd like to share Director McGuire's gratitude. You know, when we, as citizens, call your staff, we are at our most vulnerable, it's usually a moment of terror, crisis, or danger, or health emergency. And your staff, even without COVID, are exceptional, they're exceptionally trained and exceptionally dedicated. But COVID added such a stressful level of danger to their daily work that I just want you to relay our thanks to them and complete gratitude.
Thank you.
So, that being said, I'd like to read the proclamation into the record. This is a proclamation to designate the week of May 16th through 22nd as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas members of the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival rate and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as a safety net for America's healthcare system. And whereas the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Services Team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Services Team, whether a career or a volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas LaPorte County residents benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of our LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. So now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of LaPorte, State of Indiana, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and we encourage our community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities with our gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. So moved to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Andrew. As somebody who's had the opportunity to write in the back of one of your handbooks, I would say that your people are so professional, and when you're laying there not knowing if you're going to live or die, and they just have a way to put you at ease and get you to the hospital, like almost magic, it was so fast, and very professional, reflection of your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
A little history with Andrew. I graduated from high school with his dad, so I've known the boy since he was born. Good man. Next on our list, Consider Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal. John Jones, Michiana Insurance, former county councilman, pillar of the community, and a damn fine handsome man that he is.
Good morning, Mr. President, Commissioners, Mr. Auditor, Attorney Friedman. John Jones, Michiana Insurance Services. We have offices in Michigan City, LaPorte, New Carlyle, South Bend, and Plymouth. Appreciate you hearing me on the agenda this morning. I would be remiss if I did not thank and applaud the rising to the challenges that the nurses, the EMS folks, and the correctional officers and the Sheriff's Department have done for all of us this past year. As you know, I'm a former retired paramedic, and also a former emergency services administrator, so I do appreciate the fine work that they've done. And also to let you know real quickly that I had both of my shots at the county fairgrounds. That went very smoothly and very efficient. It was good to see a lot of the retired nurses that I remembered, including former Red Cross Director Bobby Petrie, who was kind of organizing and orchestrating the whole operation out there. I distributed to you Commissioners an email and cover letter through Diane with a spreadsheet showing this year's property casualty package proposal for LaPorte County's renewal of May 27th, 2021 to May 27th of 2022. Just as you heard from the Health Department Nurse, so aptly put, the public entity insurance market has hardened quite significantly. I saw warnings and white papers on this more than a year ago. Last year, we saw a 2% increase after many years of being flat, and this year we're seeing a larger increase, and we expect it to be difficult again next year. I distributed with wide distribution requests for proposals this year. I shopped 12 carriers for the property liability piece, and eight cyber liability carriers, anticipating this hard market taking rate, and in some cases, exiting certain markets. I don't have our incumbent Chubb cyber liability renewal quote in as of yet, but I'm expecting that the one I've placed on your spreadsheet, Obsidian, will be the winner on that proposal as well. So that would be a new carrier that I'd like to introduce and recommend this year. Chubb and others, who you currently have, other cyber liability carriers have been coming in last minute. I apologize for that. Sometimes triple the rate. The ransomware attacks are happening every six seconds now in the United States, and I anticipate that that rate will be large again. I had to move another entity, client of mine, three days before renewal, to another carrier because of their rate. So they provide good insurance, but they're taking rate because of losses. Also, material shortages, COVID lawsuits, civil unrest, all those things that we are dealing with now have affected this market. So with that being said, we are looking at almost a 9% increases here at 8.79% across the board. I saw some good savings with the movement of the cyber liability carrier. And out of those 12 carriers that I solicited, only two new carriers provided formal proposals, which I don't believe would put us in a better position than Travelers, so I'm recommending that we stay with Travelers. Travelers, as you know, is a large enough company to weather this storm. They're an A++ rated AM best carrier, admitted in the state of Indiana, and I think that they've served us well in the past with their service. With that, I'd draw your attention to the spreadsheet that I provided to you, and tell you that if we start at the top, the Chubb crime app that we had, and we did have a large claim that is now in the rearview mirror because it's been over five years ago. So we remain flat with the crime proposal. Property proposal took a large increase this year, and again, that was due to not our loss experience, because our loss experience here on property has been very, very good, admitted by the underwriter. However, because of, across the board, in their book of business, on all accounts, and pretty much with all carriers, the price of lumber and lawsuits have driven that up somewhat. Looking secondly to our auto-physical carrier, Intergovernmental Insurance Exchange, they saw 11.85%, and that is due to our experience here in the county. We have a five-year loss ratio with them of 104%. Last year alone, we were at 245% on our loss ratio there. Out of the five years, we only had three years, well, we had three years that were good years, and we had two that were bad, and one that was horrible. So with that, over that five years, we're seeing a raise in that that I'm hoping that we can drive down in the future. General liability, along with all the professional lines of liability with Travelers, again, has taken some increases for those reasons I've already mentioned. Law enforcement liability was one of the larger ones, and we can see, I think, by watching the news a little bit what's driving that. With an account of this size, we're dealing with national carriers, and unfortunately, as you know how insurance works, we're all in this together, providing premium in exchange for large loss security. The umbrella is included in that figure there, in the cyber liability. Again, we went from about 14,000 when we first started. Of course, we had a large claim of a quarter of a million dollars in payout with administrative fees and Bitcoin to a ransomware attack in 2019. We're going to deal with that a little bit for that five years, as I mentioned. However, we started at about 14,000 initially, went to 25,000 to 47,000. I've continued to shop that, and even though we still have a claim, a large claim on our experience level, Diane, or, excuse me, Darlene Hale has done a great job of mitigating and hardening our system, and making underwriters feel comfortable with the moves that LaPorte County has made. So this year, I'm happy to present Obsidian, which is a new carrier, which I provided that contract to Attorney Friedman to vet for us, but I'm happy with it. It's got good coverages, in fact, some better than where we were at, with the only caveat being a little bit higher deductible was offered. We were at 25,000 previously, we're at 50,000 this year with them. I'm still recommending that we go with them, they're 16,998. That's lower than we've seen in a couple of years, so we're back to where we were prior to that claim with that. Now, the TPA services.
Maybe we should recognize, and the commission needs to know, you're absolutely right, the effort required by the IT department to harden our defenses and to provide further insulation from a claim is remarkable, as you were able to drive that cost down, because we were dealing with the impact of the ransomware attack for a couple of years after it occurred. But that quote surprised me with how well it's come in.
I guess that would be a place of question for me, Mr. Jones, because you are representative in the insurance industry. When there are alerts and advice on how to continue to harden our system, as you know, technology is constantly morphing daily, weekly, monthly, we need to make sure that we have state-of-the-art information and we can execute on that. So if you could make sure that Darlene and the Commissioners have that information so that we can stay current, I think that the danger continues, and if you look at the data across the country, it's relentless, and we need to be on top of that.
That's a great point, and we can absolutely do that risk management piece with Darlene Hale. I've spent several hours with Darlene, and also the Sheriff's Department IT personnel and the 911 IT personnel, because we've got three separate servers and domains working in the county. And as I've told all my clients, including when I sit down with Darlene and the other folks, we've filled out several applications in trying to make sure that we've got the best coverage available. And we use those applications as a free consultation, because if we're saying no, we should be saying yes. And after we had the unfortunate claim that came in, we also had a response from Travelers, which was phenomenal. We had a REIT out of New York come in to do forensics on our computer system. Darlene followed all of their advice, made all the corrections that were necessary. And then, as we went back, even though that claim was through Travelers, Travelers made us do a formal interview with them, including Darlene and myself, on a conference call, where they had a systems expert on the phone with us, and he made one final recommendation with Darlene, and she quickly investigated that and instituted that. So we'll continue to do that, I'll continue to provide that information and risk management through Darlene to continually change with that market change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, before we get going, I have a quick question. Obviously, everybody's familiar with Travelers and some of the other names you brought up. I don't believe I'm familiar with Obsidian. Are they a standalone company, or are they their own?
They are, Obsidian is not a standalone company. They actually have a reinsurer who is the largest cyber reinsurer of Munich in the world. So they have a large market piece right now, and I would say that prior to their market piece, Beasley was considered the Cadillac, if you will, of the industry. Beasley has since taken a step back and left that market and frozen their book of business, not taking on any new clients. And in Obsidian, which goes by the name that I really didn't want to bring up today, Cowbell, on their paper, has kind of taken that space, and it's got the confidence of most of the underwriters I've talked to.
So you're saying we need more Cowbell?
Yes, we need more Cowbell.
And one final thing while we're talking about Obsidian here. Are they going to, they're going to offer some of the same things Travelers did as far as on their backend, if something were to occur, making recommendations?
Yes, in fact, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'd be glad to send it to you. They sent us a list of their markets that they use, and it was quite impressive. I think that you had probably saw that, Mr. Friedman. And I would hope if I had that here, but I'd be happy to email it to you because it's impressive. A REIT was one of their response market support agencies, and others that you will recognize. In fact, I'll do that when I get back, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'll send that to you. But Cowbell scared me a little bit when I first heard that name. However, after some research, and I'll show you their response mechanisms, I was satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we have an entertaining motion here to accept his recommendations?
Mr. President, Mr. Jones has provided us over the years some exceptional advice, and I think we should accept his recommendations for the property and casualty insurance renewal, and know that he's always on standby to answer our questions.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much. Can I mention one last thing? On May 12th, we have a renewal that I did not bring with me, and I apologize for that. Global Aerospace Global Aerospace, we have a little hand-slared policy to cover the Sheriff's Department and the EMA for their drones. The Sheriff's Department has quite an elaborate drone, and we need to carry aviation insurance. That's an exclusion on the Travelers form. So that is $2,818. That was not included. I just got that in yesterday. I was able, we had separate policies for them in the past, and I was able to put them all in one policy this year with a $2 million liability limit. So that is also a strong policy that I would recommend that with your approval, that actually renews on May 12th.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the aviation insurance recommendation from Mr. Jones at Michigan Insurance.
Second.
All in favor, that's a aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next on the agenda, consider ordinance amending zoning map to rezone property owned by Briar Ridge Subdivision, R1B to R2A. Chris Willoughby, attorney, we had a little discussion on that earlier. Was there anything you'd like to add?
We did, in just a little bit. For Willoughby, Braden Nelson, and James, on behalf of Briar Ridge Partnerships, I have with me one of the principals, Mr. Jim Magnuson, who many of you are familiar with, proposing and bringing yet another quality and community-minded project, along with Mr. Fedorcheck of GMF Architects and Developers. So I will defer, much as I did at the Plan Commission, to any specific questions you might have. We are simply here, and I note that Mr. Novak's comments, and we are, there's a lot of process left. So I'll leave it at that. We are, we're here with an ordinance that comes before you with a certification of unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, of which Mr. Haney was a part of. Mr. Pullin, to echo his sentiments from earlier, was very adamant and detailed of what he expected. My client, along with Mr. Fedorcheck, are up to the challenge, and they're aware of what is expected in working with them. We point out that in the past, the same property Mr. Magnuson worked with and allowed across the gratis pipe that alleviated some water issues, some flooding issues with Tiffany Woods, intends to continue to be a good neighbor. And before you, you have an ordinance that is requesting rezoning from R1B to R2A, which would allow the development that is proposed, which is a 47-unit townhome development. I think of a particular note, there were no remonstrators against, at the Plan Commission level, density in some of those, we had some discussions with some residents of Tiffany Woods, and after we were able to explain the nature of the project, as Mr. Fedorcheck has pointed out, the density that would be allowed under this zoning, it's actually going to mirror, be the same as what would be allowed under the current zone. So this is just the first step that allows us, and while it might seem that things are fast-tracked, and again, noting what Councilperson Novak said, there's a lot of process left. So we have received preliminary approval of the planned unit development for the Plan Commission. Lots to be done, lots of department heads to give input and to meet Mr. Pullin's specifications. And so before you, again, you have a proposed ordinance asking for your approval of the rezoning. Of particular note, also making sure that we follow the zoning ordinance, and for your consideration, the criteria set forth in Article 30, Section 30.07, which I will defer to Mr. Friedman with regard to whether those are met. But they are, whether this plan fits within the county development plan, the current conditions of the surrounding area, desirable uses, property values, responsible growth, environmental conditions, spot zoning, and neighborhood plan. This property is a little bit unique in that it could go several ways, probably should have been zoned, or could have been zoned when the comprehensive plan was redone, you know, a couple handfuls of years ago. It could easily be manufactured. So the biggest concern out of all of these, we're going to increase property values, it's going to be developed, it's a vacant land, it's going to match the neighborhoods of the residential community in and around, including Briar Leaf and some of the townhome developments that are there. Spot zoning, if there were any, that should be your main concern, in my opinion, and it isn't conferring a special benefit on this one parcel for the reasons I just stated. It could easily fit within the manufacturing or the residential, and this change is necessarily solely for the purpose to allow townhomes. So with that said, I remind, this came before you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from Plan Commission. We respectfully ask that you approve this ordinance with the understanding we have a lot of process left. And I would request that if you were inclined, that your attorney's recommendation, that you suspend your normal procedures and perhaps approve this ordinance in one meeting so that we can move forward with our, with the final approval and the things that Mr. Pullin has requested.
Counsel, you have looked at this?
I have, I've had an opportunity to look at the proposed ordinance. We're comfortable with the form and content, the fact that there was no remonstrance, and was consistent with a unanimous recommendation of the Plan Commission. We're comfortable if you seek to waive and suspend the rules so that you could read this on two readings, if that's your pleasure.
If it's your pleasure, Commissioners.
Mr. President, I move to approve this rezoning, and I think we should hear it on both readings. I also think that it's important to note that this is an investment in housing in Lepore County, which, as we know, is an area of need, so that we can have a menu of all types of housing, from high-end to affordable. And this certainly is a step towards making more homes available in our county for our families and people who want to invest in our community. I do, I do think we would be remiss if we did not mention the fire suppression issue, just so that it's on your radar. I'm sure it is, but that is a concern. Former Fire Chief Novak did bring up a really critical point, as we begin to develop deeper and deeper into areas that don't have all of the infrastructure in place, we need to make sure that that's on our radar, it's on the Plan Commission's radar, and it's on the zoning board's radar as well. So with that, I move to approve the rezoning request on first reading, and then we'll follow with second reading.
Yes, I would second that, and at the Plan Commission, we went over some, a lot of those things, we covered a lot of bases, and this is a preliminary step before the developer goes and spends more money, not knowing that we were favorable toward the idea. It's a good way to put out there that we know and we're in favor of the idea of assuming all the different criteria are met, and that that's kind of where we're moving forward here. So, yes, so second.
Motion to second on first reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. President, I move that we hear this ordinance on the second reading, amending the zoning map to rezone property owned by Briar Ridge Subdivision on second reading.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Last but not least, consider motion to permit both auditor and treasurer to serve as co-administrators for law financial system with any disputes to be resolved by the county data board. We had a meeting on that yesterday. I think we did reach a, an agreement on that.
I just want to, if I may, I just want to thank you for calling that meeting and your leadership in getting myself, the treasurer, head of IT, a couple others together. It was very productive, and I think that we're in good stead as far as moving forward, so.
So, Mr. President, would you like us to pull this off the agenda, or just say that there are no further actions to be taken?
Yeah, I'd say no further action. I think we're good. We've got an agreement, everybody is, so.
Thank you.
Just remove it, ignore it.
Mr. Friedman, is any- You can move to table it, or if you wanted to, at least place of record. I mean, I'm not sure it's harmful to necessarily place of record that, because they've agreed to serve essentially as co-administrators, any disputes to be resolved by county.
Joey, Treasure Winsky, I think, is she still on? Yeah, I mean, Joey can speak this as well, but I think, I think that it's more complicated than that, so I don't know if you want to go into all that here, but that's not exactly what was agreed. I think that, that really IT is the main figure to, to turn out. The problem with this whole issue is I think it's complicated about security, and there's different usernames, and part of the issue was, again, I want to get in public meeting all the details of the discussion we had, it was a one hour, upwards of one hour meeting. But, so, I don't know if that's really the way the meeting was resolved. Commissioner, you were, you were, both of you were there.
Sure. So I, it's my understanding that both the auditor, the treasurer, and IT are all happy with what was decided amongst themselves yesterday, and I don't really think the commission needs to weigh in on it, as all three are in agreement. I don't think the commission needs to weigh in on it, we can just-
In fact-
Remove it from the agenda, or whatever else, and they're, they're all in agreement, so there's no need for us really to-
Or you could move to table, and that way, if it needs to be revived at some point, to be made of record. I mean, either, either way, or remove from the agenda, whatever you want.
I, I, I would move to remove it from the agenda.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. We're down to our favorite part, Commissioner's comments. Mr. Haney.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a busy couple of weeks again. Numerous visits out to the vaccine clinic, as well as had a great meeting last week with the Intergovernmental Affairs Office, Andrew Forster, and some of his colleagues came down to join us. We also had our Route 20 widening meeting with Indot here in the Commissioner's Room last week as well, with those turn lanes. We had a Township Trustee meeting, I attended as well, obviously, the Plan Commission. We're working on a solar ordinance, perhaps there, as many of you may know, the state failed to take that up, which, which is probably good news, it's down at county level. So we're going to be continuing to look at that at the Plan Commission. At the council meeting, I brought up some new information that we had, and I've shared with my fellow commissioners about addressing some of the flooding issues that are relating to some of our infrastructure, road issues as well out in the Nowak area. We mentioned earlier, we had an amazing jail tour and visit with correctional officers out there, and sheriff, as well as both sergeants. And I had a list here, and that's what I was looking for earlier, while I was flipping through, trying to find, I took notes from the various names that I saw. As you guys know, I'm generally horrible with names, that's why I write them down, so I can remember them. It's my apologies to both the sergeants and the other deputies there that I don't have those names here in front of me. But again, it's, you guys do an amazing job, and it's something that I would never consider doing. One of, one of the things that was remiss of my daughters asked that I watch out for, see if there were any dementors, I did not encounter any, so that was good news.
What?
No.
Okay.
Also, I had a Parks and Rec meeting, Mr. Seveski has come up with some good, some good things for some infrastructure repairs, maybe looking at to add into our ARP funds as well, so that was, that was good news. Overall, great two weeks, and it's nice to see that finally our weather is warming up here. Just want to close with a couple of quotes. Jean-Paul Chartet said, "Commitment is an act, not a word." And as, as next month, or not next month, but as May 9th is the birthday of Sophie Schpal, I thought it was appropriate to remember her. She was executed at the age of 21 by guillotine by the Nazis in Germany, and her quote was, "Stand up for what you believe in, even if you were standing alone." That, thank you.
Mr. President, just a few things. This morning, the Commissioners received the daily email from the Health Department. Jenny Smith does a great job of making sure that we're, we get the most current data. This morning, there were 49 cases of COVID in our county, COVID positive. Yesterday, there were 55, the day before, I believe, was 47. Amanda did a really good job of trying to summarize the work, but when we have 212 deaths in our county related to COVID, I think it's, it would be remiss of us to downplay the importance of continuing to be aware and alert when we have a 10% positivity rate, that is concerning. Many of us have gotten vaccinated. If you have not, please consider getting vaccinated. It's, it is a level of safety that you can go out into the community with. But, you know, the more we have deaths, the more concerning. I talked to Dr. Cora recently, and he was talking about the hospitalization at our Franciscan is up again. We, we need to continue to wear masks if we're in crowded places. You know, everyone's car that I've ever been in lately has hand sanitizer in all the little pockets, so keep your hand sanitizer handy, and socially distance when you can at crowded stores. You know, Commissioner Marzinski made a good point, we've all been trying our best, we have our masks, we have, we're trying, we need to keep trying, because 49 cases were positive between noon yesterday and this morning, and that's, that's some serious numbers. So I just wanted to make sure, we're sick of it, I get it, we're all fed up and want to go back to life as we, as we once had it, but we're at the, we're at the end of the, end of the line, and we need to continue to be diligent. I loved our meeting today because it had so much positivity in it. We talked about our jail staff and the importance of them in our daily lives and keeping our families and our children safe. I just really appreciated Amanda bringing forward about honoring nurses and healthcare providers. I can't forget teachers, as a teacher myself. There are some people who probably aren't the most well-paid individuals in our culture, but do some amazing work. When an ambulance pulls up to your house, and Lepore County EMS personnel gets out to help you in your time of distress, that person's and their kindness to you cannot be understated. So we gave a lot of gratitude today, but I really want to impress on the county team how grateful this community is for the care that you give to us. Usually, at a time when we are in crisis, when we are vulnerable, when we are distressed, you step up and you really, you really help us. Our 911, you know, they're the first line of defense, so when you call 911 and a positive person answers and gets your information and knows what to do and calms you down, all of those folks as a team in Lepore County, we have some incredible people who've dedicated their lives to taking care of us. So I really wanted to say that the silver linings of the pandemic cannot be understated. One of it, I really believe it's pulled our, our safety team, our health team, our law enforcement teams even closer together, because we've had to rely on each other in a way we, in our lifetime, we haven't. And when COVID's in the distance, we probably will look back with a lot of gratitude for the simple things that we once took for granted. So thank you, and have a great week, everyone.
You have some good points there, Commissioner. Been a tough year. We, we get the numbers from the Health Department every day, when we saw it, that it was down to eight or nine cases a day, but hey, we're moving in the right direction, and now we're up to 30 to 40 cases a day. It's disturbing what's, what's happened, and when you look at those small businesses that have gone out of business, and the impact it's had on the industry as a whole, everything that we, that we see and touch in Lepore County that's impacted. You know, last year, we didn't have our Fourth of July parade, for God's sake, we're the state capital for the day, that's huge. Our Memorial Day services were canceled. Personal note, the first year, and my band has been together for 30 years, the first year that we did not play on our 30th year, our gig in Phoenix was canceled, and the street dance in the Fox Park. It's, we're really hoping that we're going to finally turn the corner here, but right now is not the time. You're right, we are, we're bad. I've had continued discussions with, about our drawbridge in Michigan City. I think we finally came up with a good solution here. Talked with Mr. Yagalski as late as this morning, talked with Mark West Electric in USI. I think we've got a plan. It's a little more dire than I had thought, but we must move forward with that. I've had continued discussions with Lock Mueller and Mayor Dermody about the North-South Connector. Thank God we're saddled with that. And pretty much a daily thing with paving, the people calling in about their paving, and why didn't my road get done? And we are moving forward, getting Johnson Road, Severs Road, and Fail Road done, something that needs to be done. Personally, I think we need to do something to protect those roads, they put all that money in it, and we got semis running over them at a regular rate, and I think we need to, to address that. So, and then, of course, the Rolling Prairie Sewer Project, moving right along. There are people out there who've been, had to have their septic pumped at about $180 a whack at least every month. They, they're hurting, and they are very, very appreciative that we're finally addressing that. So with that, that's about all I have. During the meeting, thank you everybody for coming, and continue to enjoy this beautiful warm Indiana weather.